Today is Tuesday, April the 22nd, 2025. It's 9:00 a.m. and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We're very honored and pleased to have with us today Pastor Marie Carton with the Brassus Covenant Ministries. We haven't seen her in a while, so welcome.
Amen. Well, this minister just keeps getting older. Well, Father, we come today representing an earthly government, and it's our prayer to align with your heavenly government. We come in the name of Jesus, who is salvation and deliverance from all chaos and all evil, and delivers us into peace and love and order. So we pray today, "Your kingdom come. Your kingdom come, and your will be done." And from your courtroom in the heavens, we order in the atmosphere today, we bind all chaos, all human anger, anything that would bring chaos. And, Lord, we release and ask you to bless us with just supernatural joy at what you're going to do in this county, and hope and love, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Today, we've got five proclamations here. So this is kind of a, I think, a new record. But the first present proclamation is a proclamation declaring May 4th, 2025, International Firefighters Day. So Mike and Lauren, good. We have y'all here. You've got the proclamation? Good. These, and Chad Davis is up here with us, too. So, Mike, you want to look? And we got, please, Mike, you want to read that to us?
Yes, sir. And good morning, and it was good to see you Saturday. It was a great day to be in America in Hood County, watching that flag go up.
It was a big, that's a big flag, isn't it?
Yes, sir. So this is the official proclamation to designate May 4th, 2025, as International Firefighters Day. Whereas International Firefighters Day is observed each year on the 4th of May, on this date, you are invited to remember the past firefighters who have died while serving our community or dedicated their lives to protecting the safety of us all. At the same time, we show our support and appreciation to the firefighters worldwide who continue to protect us so well throughout the year. And whereas by proudly wearing and displaying blue and red ribbons pinned together by our participating in a memorial recognition event, we can show our gratitude to firefighters everywhere. The different ribbons are linked to colors symbolic to the main elements firefighters work with, red for fire and blue for water. These colors are also internationally recognized as representing emergency services. And whereas Friends of Memorial Lane, our mission is to honor and remember all first responders, a special ceremony will be observed on May 3rd, 2025, at the Jim Burks Firefighter Memorial Park located in Granbury, Texas, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Whereas Hood County has nine fire stations that are manned by men and women as volunteers, giving free service to our community, creating a valor or a value to our county that we will never be able to place a dollar value to. And now therefore, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim May 4th, 2025, as International Firefighters Day. And May 3rd, 2025, as a day that all citizens are invited to join Friends of Memorial Lane on location at the park to both honor and remember the 2024-2025 firefighters of the year. We also declare this day a time we recognize the value of a firefighter, signed into 22nd day of April, 2025, by you, Judge, as well as members of the court. Thank you.
Right. This is a great deal. Ashley, you going to please put that in the paper to remind all the citizens to come out on Friday, May the 3rd, at 10:00 a.m. down at Memorial Park out here, so that we can honor these guys, okay? So that's good. Thank all of y'all. So this is Chad Davis. Mike, everybody knows who you are. And what's your name? I think it's Fahey something, isn't it? Something like that? And Lauren, and Lauren Fisher up here. Y'all do such a great job in doing that. Thank all of y'all for doing that, and we'll see y'all on the 3rd, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we want to thank our two friends here. We want to thank them for everything that we do on this earth. We're sending their stuff every day.
Well, thank you. You all, that's good. Thank you. Thank you. All right, you got one more? Is this the national? Is this, is this this one here National Police Week?
Yes, sir.
I guess you're going to read this, or Chad, you going to read this? Yeah, I guess. Go ahead of the way. We'll stand up here with you. We'll stand up here with you.
Whereas our law enforcement agencies play a central role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which have been guaranteed by the Constitution to every American citizen. And whereas it is important that all people throughout our community know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of our police departments, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people of safeguarding life and property by also protecting them against violence or intimidation. And whereas we encourage all citizens to set aside a time during National Police Week, May 11th through 17th, 2025, to recognize our law enforcement with a prayer of protection and support. And whereas Friends of Memorial Lane will be holding a ceremony on Saturday, May 10th, 2025, at the Jim Burks Firefighter Memorial Park, Granbury, Texas, at 10:00 a.m. to honor our local law enforcement servants for their leadership and service to our community. And whereas many have gone beyond the call of duty, and we have community where these faithful have rendered dedicated service, and in doing so, have established for themselves an inviolable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and securities for each of us. Now therefore, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim May 11th through 17th, 2025, as National Police Week. And May 10th, 2025, as a day in which our community will join hands with others to say thank you to our local servants from the sheriffs, constables, police, B.R.A., troopers, and EMS branches. Signed this 22nd day of April, 2025, by the Hood County Commissioners Court.
You want me to come up there and have your picture taken, though? Come on up here. You're. Jeff? Why don't you hold that? You're law enforcement, too. Come on. I need a little more room up here. Ashley's going to put that in the paper again, and we're going to have a big turnout on both of those days.
And also, May 26th, we got Memorial Day. We invite y'all down. We have a lot of service there at 8:30, and to remember those that have gave the ultimate sacrifice. And Miss Gail Joyce will be receiving a spilt of remembrance for the son of Fox and Mogabishu, accident of Black Hawk Down, for our operation. Please come out and honor her and her family, and those who rest in the gates of ultimate sacrifice.
Good. Thank you for that. So three good holidays in May, all right? See y'all there. Thank y'all.
I'm good, how are you?
Good morning.
Good. How are you?
You're Lauren.
I'm Lauren, yes.
Who's going to, you, you going to read this?
I'm going to read it.
How long is it?
I know. I didn't write this one. All right. This is the official proclamation to designate May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and May 8th, 2025, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of Hood County. And whereas the citizens of Hood County value their overall health and that of their families and fellow citizens, and are proud to support the observances such as Mental Health Month and Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And whereas 29% of children have a diagnosable mental health condition, and whereas nearly 1 in 5 school-aged children missed more than one day of school due to mental or emotional concerns, and whereas 48% of parents experience difficulty accessing needed mental health care in their community. And whereas the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for individuals and families is a critical responsibility for our community. And whereas there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their overall health and well-being. And whereas each citizen, local business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, and faith-based organization shares the burden of mental health concerns and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness, recovery, and support prevention efforts. Whereas the Cook Children's Center for Community Health, through their unique community partnerships and prevention-based approaches to serving children and adolescents, are effectively addressing the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community. Whereas it is the appropriate month, it is appropriate that a month should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards mental health education and the support of treatment and recovery. And whereas it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards our children's mental health and well-being. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim May 2025 Mental Health Awareness Month, and May 8th, 2025, Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And we call upon our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every person's mental health needs to unite in the observance of such efforts and commit with the citizens of Hood County to increase awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
I'm going to go.
Outreach program director here for us here. She does a great job here. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Let's get us a good picture.
Should I grab my phone so she can take it with my phone? I'm going to grab our phone.
Okay. Fill this through your boss. If you were actually here, if you were actually here this morning. Thank you for the great view. Thank you for the great opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kay Dykes, and this is Bedford. Bedford the therapy dog, yes, sir.
Bedford the therapy dog. Well, listen, it's nice to have you here on our court here. Bedford's a good-looking dog here.
Thank you. Thank you. He really loves visiting. We visit in the community at the elementary schools and at J.P.S.
Oh, do you?
And some of the, some of the retirement villages and all.
Well, good. See, that's, I want you to read this then, all right?
He's very interested in everybody's feet because he's been, he just had surgery. He's been in doggy jail at home for a while, so he's very excited to be out and about.
Yeah. Yeah. Bedford, even though you have a foot fetish, we still like you.
Absolutely, dad. Come here, can you sit? Sit down, buddy. Sit down.
Good boy.
Show them how good you are, okay? Don't embarrass me. Sit, baby, stay. Come on, stay. I know he's like, I know I'm at the center of attention, but usually do something. Whereas Pet Partner has designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day. And whereas scientific research shows that interacting with therapy animals can reduce stress, relieve depression, slow heart rate, lower blood pressure, and strengthen the immune system. And whereas therapy animal teams in the city of Granbury play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond. And whereas therapy animal teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those approaching end of life. And whereas those exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. And whereas we encourage more pet owners to consider becoming Pet Partners volunteers to help our community by creating greater access to meaningful therapy animal visits. Now therefore, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day, and encourage our citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers. Further, we salute the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation. Signed with you. Thank you all so much.
Oh, isn't it great?
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Bedford, you're a great dog.
The worst they do.
All right, well, let's make sure we get Bedford in.
Absolutely. Come here, buddy. Camera sees pretty much the cam, so like.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all so much. Well, thank y'all. I'm here for something for y'all.
Oh, right.
She has a, she has a card. This is Bedford's card. And I guess I'll take the opportunity. There are so many great pets and pet owners in Granbury, and they're such a neat one. If people are interested, please reach out. I'll leave a card back there on the, on the little entryway desk. Because we really, we need more. We get more requests than we can fill. And I know there are a lot of great, great dogs. Not just dogs, could be therapy animal cats and all kinds. Thank y'all.
They really like you.
Thank you.
They really, really.
Thank y'all.
We have one more? Good. Every kid helping me. Oh, my. Again, totally.
Hey, good. I'm here. I have a hand. That's on the turf, believe me.
What did she have? She have a little?
A little boy.
That's what I mean.
Took a ride.
Good.
This one's not as long.
All right. You did such a great job. You all won.
Okay, well, thank you. All right. This is the official proclamation to designate April 21st through 25th, 2025, as Every Kid Healthy Week. Whereas it is important to keep family members and students healthy during this time, which includes all areas of health. Whereas healthy kids are better prepared to learn and thrive. And whereas there is a need for continuing education in a wide-scale effort to enhance healthy practices. Whereas Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension and Cook Children's Center for Community Health, through their unique partnership and prevention-based approaches to serving children, are effectively addressing the healthy lifestyle needs of children, youth, and families in our community. Now therefore, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim April 21st through 25th, 2025, as Every Kid Healthy Week in Hood County, and urge all citizens to join the campaign, encourage families to participate this week by having fun practicing healthy habits at home with Every Kid Healthy Week activities, and also recommend all schools adopt these activities to implement with their students safely.
Right. There you go. You're a good job. Thank you. That's it?
That's it.
No, it needs to come back.
Somebody up here, don't forget there.
Right there.
All right.
I'm Captain, it's all we got to put in the search. We're in the area. This is our diagram. He's only been here 30 years.
No, yes, he is. Do be called this morning, and he's not able to attend.
That's why I said, that's why I blasted over there.
He's in investigation.
Was the sheriff's department?
Yes, sir.
So sheriff's. All right. That's right into the next, to the services comment at bar. We have two people signed up to speak. First, it's a person who was all Cindy Highsmith.
He's killing trash.
Okay. My name is Cindy Highsmith, and I live in Pecan Plantation. And the last time I was here was for a workshop. And it was to look at the state fire marshal. He had adopted a code, 855, and our county was looking at adopting that. Well, the code is there, but implementing the code. So we had a wonderful speaker that came from Van Zant County, and she gave us all kinds of information about bests and what needed to be done in a county if you're going to have a best. So the next day was the 12th of April, and there was another. She had talked about 79 best fires, and there was another one. And it was an enormous fire. It was in the North Ayrshire Battery Recycling Plant. And this is what the environmentalist said. The amount of toxins are equivalent, from that fire, to 1,000 trucks with poorly tuned diesels driving nonstop for over 10 years. So I, you know, looked at the, looked at ERCOT, looked at what was in our county, what's coming. And I looked at the Apache Hill Energy Center, and I looked at what they had put out, what was said in the, in what was put out in social media. And it said, you know, 200-megawatt battery energy storage project in Hood County, and that it was acquired by Vita Synergy in 2024, and that it was going to be next door to the Comanche Peak Nuclear Power Plant. So, okay. So then I go to our CAD, and I pull up exactly where is it going to be? Where is it going to be? So I find out that the address is 2625 Membreno Highway. So then I look at, where is that? Where, where is that? So where it is, is .2 miles from the Rainbow's Promised Childhood. You know, it's a childcare center. It's 1.2 miles from Membreno Elementary, and it's 1 mile from Membreno Baptist Church. Am I concerned? Yeah, I'm concerned about that. I'm so glad that our fire marshal will now be looking at a fee code, and will be having inspectors, and will be going out there and making sure that everything they say they're going to do, they're going to do. So I look at the company. I'll look at Vita Synergy, and I look at what they've done. I look at where they're located and what they've done. So, you know, I can, I can create a website, too. It's not hard. I can make it look good, too. Well, I can see this is their first project. That concerns me. That concerns me. So, you know, my ask is that you give the fire marshal every tool he needs to inspect these bests, to do everything to ensure that our children in this county are safe. That's, that's one of my asks today. Then my second ask is, why in the world, in Precinct 2 of Hood County, the only thing we're attracting there are utilities? So when I moved here, there were three gas-powered plants. And I moved here, and we got the first best here, okay? Next door to one of the gas-powered plants. And I hear that the safety there is great, and I feel good about that. So then the next thing that comes along is Bitcoin mine. And now we're going to have a peaking plant, okay? We'll follow three. And now we're going to have a solar utility, and we're going to have two more bests. So here's my ask. Here's my ask to the commissioners here. So I pulled one of my husband's old economics books. He went to the Macomb School of Business at UT. And I pulled up The Definition of Economic Development. So it refers to the process of improving in areas economic wealth and quality, quality of life. It involves strategies to create jobs, create jobs, stabilize tax bases, and enhance overall prosperity, ultimately leading to increased income, productivity, and a higher standard of living for the community. That's what economic development is. That's what I would like this court to be looking at for Hood County, especially for Precinct 2. I'd like to get something other than utilities down there. And I'd like you to hire somebody to do this. I really am serious about this. What's the answer here? So that's an ask for me. And when it comes to property rights and, and so what I'm hearing from people is that these land, the landowners, and I look at, you know, who owned this land, and, you know, what's happened with this Apache Hill. I look at the rain lily. Typically, bests are own properties. They're not leased properties. I've looked at a lot of them. But anyway, as far as Pecan Plantation goes, as far as we go, you know, I live in a nice community. You know, there's nice people there, and we're very concerned about all of this. And so I just wanted to read this to you, and it's something to think about. Freedom does not give individuals the right to infringe on their neighbor's rights. While individuals have rights and freedoms, those rights are not absolute and can be limited when they infringe upon the rights of well-being of others. For example, a person's right to use their property is limited by the neighbor's right to quiet enjoyment of their property. So I'd like you to think about that. Thank you for allowing me to speak to the court.
Thank you. The next speaker is Clayton Holmes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I really appreciate it. I'm also a resident of Pecan, and so I'm speaking on the same topic, although not near specifically as Cindy is. I just wanted to tell you some things that I've learned and that we are. I'm one of those nice people that she said that were concerned. I'm one of those other nice people, I hope. I, there's two, I think there's two categories that, that these, that this. And again, I'm supportive of property rights. We had property in South Texas until very recently, and were approached to do the same thing and chose not to do it for these reasons, you know? But I do want to say that, that sometimes people can be, you might think people are alarmists, but the, the challenges fall into two categories. Emergency-type issues, which are very dramatic and terrible when they happen. And while those may be not as common, and so you might, you might, that concern might not be challenged, might not be as important to you. And I'm miles away from the data center and I can hear the data center. So the battery storage is going to be much closer to me. And I'm not the only person who can hear it, by the way. And so I just wanted you to know that, that that's a significant impact. The lighting will be a significant impact. The displacement of, of wildlife will be a significant impact. Right now, the furrow hogs are mostly on that, on the other side of the Brazos. They're not going to be on the other side of the Brazos, you know, when, when this, when this solar farm goes in. So I just wanted to let you know that I have similar concerns and many of us have similar concerns. And I guess the last thing I'd say is we're talking about the historic Brazos River, one of the four great rivers of this state. I mean, it's, it's, it's Raso de Rio, it's the arm of God and we need to protect it. And I cannot imagine how this is going to be, be appropriate for that, for that concern. And so that's, that's pretty much all I want to say. Thank you so much for your time, Judge and Commissioners.
And let me say at this point, Commissioner Samuelson, who
Yes.
She's run, was running or has run the Boston Marathon. She's always here, but she's absent because of that. She's still resting from having completed it yesterday, but she did complete it.
Right, that's wonderful.
Good.
I'm a physical therapist, I can tell you that that's a
Yeah.
That's a, that's an amazing challenge to, to complete. And she was, she was at the same meeting that, where the mitigation plan was talked about and we, and she's been great. She's been supportive and great, so thank you for that.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That, that concludes the comments at large. And so now we get to the agenda themselves. And I'll remind you that if you want to speak on an agenda item, you must complete a public participation form and hand it to the sheriff so the sheriff can give it to Ms. Christine here so that she can mark you down and get you in line here. So item number one, authorize a county judge to sign the City of Granbury's event application approving the use of the historic courthouse parking lot beginning at noon Thursday, July the 3rd through 6:00 PM Sunday, July the 6th for the Chamber of Commerce hometown 4th of July event. This happens every year, it's happened every year for, forever. And this is subject to getting the insurance and everything, which we always do. So I move that we authorize a county judge to sign the Granbury's event application for those dates and times. Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 5-0. I'm, thank you, Chris Wilson. I'm always, I was trying to include Nanette here, she's not here. 4-0 unanimously. All right, item number two, authorize a county judge to sign the City of Granbury's event application approving the use of the south side of the historic courthouse parking lot for the 2025 Memorial Day celebration beginning at 4:00 PM on Friday, May 23rd through 4:00 PM, Monday, May 26th. The parking lot spaces will be reserved by midnight Thursday, May 22nd through 8:00 PM, Monday, May 26th. Again, this is something that we do every, every year. And again, I move that we allow the county judge to sign the Granbury's event application approving the use of the south side of the historic courthouse parking lot for the 2025 Memorial Day celebration beginning at 4:00 PM on Friday, May 23rd through 4:00 PM, Monday, May 26th. The parking lot spaces will be reserved by midnight Thursday, May 22nd through 8:00 PM, Monday, May 26th. Again, this is something that we do every, every year. And again, I move that we allow the county judge to sign the Granbury's event application for the use of the parking lot on this day. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 4-0. Item number three, discuss and take appropriate action to adopt changes to voting precincts 409 and 415 pursuant to the Texas Election Codes 42.005, 42.006, 42.007 and 42.031.
And Judge, if you'll allow me to
Yes.
Start this off just for an explanation. This is an odd numbered year and we have until the end of this month to effectuate a change if needed. The boundary, the precinct, this is regarding voting precincts. The statutory, the election code states that we cannot have more than 5,000 registered voters in a voting precinct. We've surpassed that in precinct 409 and this, we're five years away from the next census. So we've made it this far, you know, we redrew the boundaries five years ago when the census came out. So we're in a, we're in a statutory time period where we have, if we have a voting precinct that's surpassed the 5,000 that we have until the end of this month to move the boundary lines. And so currently in precinct 409, there's 5,063 voters registered and in precinct 415, there are only 600. So however, with that said, I have contacted the mayor of Crescent and, and others and Crescent area, the 415 is growing very quickly. And over the next five years, there may be another, several thousand units are expected to come in over the course of the next five, six years. So it's, it will be growing. However, we have to take some out of 409. So Ms. Cooper reached, reached out to me about this some, a few weeks ago. We've been talking about it. She has done extensive study on it and I've taken a look at the statutes. And so this is a proposal to move the boundary of 415 and 409. Currently it's an Eminem Ranch Road and to move it to the west to Temple Hall Highway. Temple Hall Highway is a clean line of delineation. It will take, what that would do would take 13, approximately 1,300 voters out of 409 by moving the line and putting them over in 415. I think, again, Ms. Cooper and I have just been discussing this quite a while, but I think that that will leave us enough room where we won't have to worry about this until the next census, at least in, in precinct number four. So Ms. Cooper is willing, if anybody has any questions, she can come up here and answer. Has anybody got any questions?
We do have one speaker up here, Mr. Yawberl.
I'm going to go ahead and pass.
You passed? Okay. Ms. Cooper, do you want to say anything? That covers it? All right. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir. So I'm going to make a motion to adopt the changes to voting precinct 409 and 415 to move the boundary line to Temple Hall Highway as it's, as noted in the packet. And this is all pursuant to the Texas Election Code, sections 42.005, 42.006, 42.007 and 42.031.
Motion made by Commissioner Eagle to move the election line to Temple Hall Highway as, in voting precincts 409 and 415 as required by the Texas Election Codes 42.05, 42.06, 42.07, 42.031. Any further discussion? All those in
That change doesn't take effect until next year, is that correct?
Yeah, thank, thank you for the question, yes. The, the boundary change will take effect as of January 1, 2026, which means the next primary, it's in time for the next primary.
An addendum in our explanation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 4-0. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. The next item, it's number four, discuss and consider for approval displaying General Hood's First Texas Infantry Brigade, Brigade flag in the hallway of the historic courthouse as approved by the Hood County Historical Commission. Is there anybody here from the Historical Commission here? Is there anybody here from the SRT besides Rutherford, uh, Sutton here? We have this flag here that was approved. As you walk through the main entrance from the south side, this flag was donated by Phil Harris, which is the flag that was used by, uh, John Val Hood, uh, from Hood County, his name. And he saw this flag and he, there's a blank slate, I wrote last patent there and he has donated to frame this, to give a little color to that wall here. And the Historic Commission has approved this unanimously 9-0. So with that, I thought I'd bring you back and ask the fourth for approval too. So it will be nicely framed and will add that.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. The David Crockett chapter would like to, your permission to hang that in the historic Hood County courthouse. And if it is approved by y'all, we'd like to have an unveiling and include the Bridge Street History Center and also a representative who lives in Fort Worth, who is the president of Hood's Texas Brigade Association. So that would be the plan.
That's a, that would be a nice, nice deal. That'd, that's a lot of good artifacts and you'd be surprised how many people per week come to that historic courthouse too. And that Historic Commission is very, let me say, very aware of what goes on there. And you better not hang anything or do anything unless you get their permission. So that's for sure. So I've learned that, the hard way one time. But anyway, so that's great. So with that, do I hear a motion?
If I move that we approve this flag, it will lose first Texas Infantry Brigade flag in the hallway of the Historic Courthouse as approved by the Hood County Historical Commission.
Second. By Commissioner Wilson to approve the displaying of General Hood's First Texas Infantry Brigade flag in the hallway of the historic courthouse as approved by the Hood County Historical Commission. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 4-0. Okay, item number five, discuss and consider for approval, the payment of one third of the cost for a canvas print of the Historic Courthouse and additional payment for one third of the cost of the framing and shipping to Washington DC. The canvas will be displayed in the Small Business Administration boardroom and represent Granbury as a leader in the United States for small businesses, costs not to exceed $1,500. And we have with us Ms. Stacy Martin here, who works closely with Congressman Roger Williams, who heads up the Small Business Administration. And this will, we'll explain what this will be then.
Good morning Commissioners and Judge. And we have exciting news. We have been invited to represent Granbury, Texas, or Tex, uh, Granbury, Texas to represent the small business leaders in the United States at the Small Business Administration. And so we, alongside with Park City, Utah, who is up there right now, will be the only two cities represented. And the city and the chamber have already agreed to incur the, the third of the cost. So we're asking your approval today to do the additional third. And that is, like Judge said, only, it's not going to exceed $1,500. The framing is going to be about $350 shared with the city and the chamber. And so we'll have exciting, our piece will be displayed in the boardroom where the United States, whoever has meetings there will see. And so it's, it's a pretty big deal. So it's a big honor and Chairman Roger Williams for the Small Business Administration invited us. So I think we, hopefully with your approval, we will proceed.
And you've done a great job. You kind of spearheaded this effort. I think Ms. Martin kind of pushed it ahead and put it in front of Congressman Williams and may have suggested it'd be a great idea since Granbury has just won for the fourth time the best small town historical town in America.
And when
Fourth time. So it's only fitting that we should be in the small business.
And he has invited us to, whenever it does the hanging, he would like us to come and represent Granbury, Texas for to have our presence there will be a big deal in a, a hanging or an unveiling for this piece, so.
Pretty big honor. Thank you for all you did to do this on the deal. So do I hear a motion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we approve the claim of one third of the cost for a canvas print of the Historic Courthouse and the display of one third of the cost, framing and shipping to Washington DC, Hammond will be displayed in the Small Business Administration Boardroom in Arizona as a leader in the United States for small business, all not to exceed $1,500.
Second. A motion made by, yes?
Firmly intended.
I think that's fair. Right, yeah. Thank you. Okay. So a motion is made by Commissioner Wilson to pay for one third of the total cost of the canvas print, the framing, the shipping to Washington DC to hang in the Small Business Administration Office in Washington DC representing Granbury and Hood County. Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 4-0. Thank you again, Ms. Stacy Martin. Thanks for nudging or suggesting this to Congressman Williams. He surely picked up on it and we appreciate that. Okay, good. All right, item number six, approve and sign the resolutions for the year-end 25 rifle resistant armor and quadruped robot PSO grants. Yes, sir, Patrick, how are you doing, sir?
Hello, Judge, Commissioners. The two resolutions are fairly straightforward. They are needed for any time we have a PSO grant going forward. We're going to try to get these to y'all when we put the grants for your approval. These, however, were due a month after I got hired and we didn't have the policy and procedures in place yet. So we're starting to get feedback from the, from the governor's office. Figured it'd be better to get ahead of that rather than have to wait until we either got an award or didn't and oh, wait, now we need this and, you know, just being proactive.
Good. You're doing a good job. Thank you very much. You're doing a great job there. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate the audit of this office and what y'all doing here for doing that. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the resolution for the FY25 rifle resistant armor and quadruped robot PSO grants.
Fire. Wiffo resistant armor and quadruped robot PSO, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. All right. Item number seven, discuss and take appropriate action to amend the April 14, 2025 motion regarding the sale, lease or lease purchase of property at 1475 James Road to add a date certain. May adjourn into executive session pursuant to Government Code 551.072, discussions on real property. Commissioner Eagle.
Yeah, Judge, can we put this to the end? Because I think we need to go on exec for a minute.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and finish the rest of the docket and then we'll convene into executive session. So this now brings us to the April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five motion regarding the sale, lease, or lease purchase of property at fourteen seventy-five James Road to add a date certain. May adjourn into executive session pursuant to Government Code five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, discussions on real property. Commissioner Eagle.
Yeah Judge, can we put this to the end? Because I think we need to go on exec for a minute.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and finish the rest of the docket, and then we'll convene into executive session. So this now brings us to consent agenda. Does any Commissioner wish to pull or question anything on the consent agenda?
One thing I've been, uh, I don't, uh, may be specifically the transfer line, transfers, you know, I'd like the auditor to address that, as I've been getting comments and stuff about what we're doing here.
Yes ma'am.
Hello, this-
Stephanie Matlock.
Hi. These are housekeeping items. So for the lot item transfers for the tax note, that's just moving those funds forward so that when the ambulance is ready, we can pay for it. And then the ARPA money, we pulled back money from Pecan Plantation, and then we reissued it. So if you're looking at all of the financials, it's just messy. So these are just housekeeping items. We're not adding money anywhere. This is already there. Nothing new. Just cleaning it up.
So it's just bookkeeping, housekeeping is all it is.
Right.
Not adding, subtracting any money.
And you'll see, hopefully next court, Fund one oh nine, it'll be another housekeeping thing. Um, money comes in, and we need to increase the budgets to balance it to zero. So these are just typical mid-year things.
Basically journal change, journal entry changes.
Correct, yeah. It's cleanup.
That explanation, everybody okay with that?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
By Commissioner Andrews to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further comment? All those in favor approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously four zero. Okay, this now brings us to no road obstacle to go, so we go straight into development. Okay. Number one, set a public hearing for the replat of a con plantation, unit one, lot twenty-four R. What date do you have in mind, Mr.?
May twenty-seventh.
May twenty-seventh?
Mm-hmm.
May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for the replat of con plantation, unit one, lot twenty-four to May twenty-seventh.
By Commissioner Andrews to set the public hearing for the replat of a con plantation, unit one, lot twenty-four R for May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Second, discuss and consider the final plat of Twin Canyons Estates, lots one, two, three, block one. What do you got?
This plat is a subdivision of a twelve-point-three-three-eight acres portion of a fifty-nine-point-nine-four-two tract that is part of the Thomas E. Tucker survey abstract number five sixty-six. It'll be creating three lots with the largest being six-point-zero-zero-four acres and the smallest being two-point-five-nine-two acres. The proposed plat is in the road corridor district in precinct two, and will be served by private well and onsite sewage facilities. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Do I hear any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat of Twin Canyons Estates, lots one through three, block one.
Second. By Commissioner Andrews to approve the final plat of Twin Canyons Estate, lots one, two, three, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, discuss and consider the final plant of BSPM Granbury Platt, one, lot one, block one. Yes, sir.
All right. This final plat is a subdivision of a seven-point-five-six-nine acres portion of a thirty-four-point-oh-one acre tract. It's part of the John W. Foge survey abstract number six forty-eight. It's creating the one lot that's seven-point-five-six-nine. The final plat will be dedicating zero-point-eight-three of an acre of right-of-way along Contrary Creek Road. Lies in the road corridor district, and will be served by a mud water and onsite sewage facilities. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat of BSPM Granbury Platt, one, lot one, block one.
One, lot one, block one, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimous four zero. Now, a public hearing to discuss and consider the concept plan of Robinson Ranch, thirteen lots in precinct two. So at this time at nine fifty-nine, we will adjourn into a public hearing. So what do you have here, Mr. Head?
This property is located at eighty-eight fifty-one Massey Road in Granbury. The gross site area for this concept plan is thirty-point-zero-one acres of the Samuel B. Patton survey abstract number four fifty-nine. Proposes to create thirteen single-family residential lots that will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. The proposed concept plan is located in the rural district in precinct two, and will be dedicating thirty-foot of right-of-way along Massey Road to be in line with the new master therapy plan. This proposed concept plan proposes to construct approximately eighteen hundred and eleven linear feet of two-inch light mixed streets. There are no variances associated with this concept plan, and staff recommends approval as presented.
Comments or questions of the public? Yes, sir. You want to come up here to the microphones and state your name, and so we can get the record.
Thank you. My name is John Curtner, and, uh, question I have, as a former member of the Parks Commission Board, has property been set aside to, for public interest in this new area?
We have no ability to do that. If they want to do it, and they want to have an HOA that would maintain that, then that's up to the developer.
It's my understanding that the developers are required, when setting up new neighborhoods, to set aside property for public. Got it. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? If not, we, at, uh, ten oh two AM, we are convening back into Commissioners' Court. So at this time, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the concept plan of Robinson Ranch.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the concept plan of Robinson Ranch, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously four zero. Okay, now at ten oh three, we adjourn into a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Roadstone Estates, Phase One, lots one R and two R. Okay, Mr. Head, tell us.
This replat is being done to relocate a common line between lots one and two. This will create a three-point-five-three-seven acre lot known as lot one R, and a three-point-oh-three acre lot known as lot two R. The proposed replat is in the rural district in precinct one and is served by private well and onsite sewage facilities. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that wishes to discuss or say anything about the replat of Roadstone's estate? Comment. So at this time at ten oh three PM, we are journeying, convening back into Commissioners' Court. And do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the replat of Roadstone Estates, Phase One, lots one R and two R, block one.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the replat of Roadstone's Estate, Phase One, lots one R and two R, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously four zero. Next item, adjourn into a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of a con plantation, unit four, lots A one dash R one and A one dash R two. So at this time at ten oh four AR, AM, we are in a public hearing, and is any, uh, go ahead, Mr. Head.
This replat is a subdivision of lot A one, creating a one-point-six acre lot known as A R, A one R one, and zero-point-three of an acre known as A one R two. The proposed replat's in the water quality district and is served by a mud water and sewer. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Is there anyone here in the public wish to discuss or consider anything about the replat of a con plantation, unit four, lots A one dash R one and A one dash R two? If not, so at ten oh, ten oh five, we are convening back into Commissioners' Court. And do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the replat of con plantation, unit four, lots A one R one and A one R two.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the replat of a con plantation, unit four, lots A one dash R one and A one dash R two, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further comment or discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously four zero. Okay, next, we will adjourn into a public hearing to discuss and consider the following replats. Can we take all of these at one time?
I did it for the sake of time, because there's no changes to the lots other than elevation change.
Good. So at this time, we're going, we're journeying at, uh, ten oh six into a public hearing to discuss and consider the following replats. The Landings East, Lot Thirty-eight-Ninety-Six R, these are all in the Landings East.
Mm-hmm.
Then Lot Thirty-eight-Ninety-Seven R, Lot Thirty-nine-oh-six R, Lot Thirty-nine-oh-seven R, Lot Thirty-nine-Thirty-Five R, Lot Thirty-nine-Thirty-Six R, Lot Thirty-nine-Seventy-R, Lot Thirty-nine-Seventy-One R, Lot Thirty-nine-Eighty-Four R, Lot Thirty-nine-Eighty-Five R, Lot Four-Zero-Zero-Two R. Mr. Head.
Just to be clear and so transparent, every one of these will be a separate filing. We're doing them as one, just for the sake of time, because all these replats are being done to correct an incorrect minimum finished floor elevation that were put on the original plat. There was a discrepancy between the ground elevation and the minimum finished floor, and some of the houses were going to be required to bring in thirteen-foot of dirt, so that just wasn't, um, there are no other changes to these lots, and staff recommends approval of these replats as presented.
Okay. Is there anyone here in the public at this time that wishes to discuss or consider any of the replats that have just been read into the record? If not, at ten oh seven AM, we are convening back into Commissioners' Court. And do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, replats as presented in that list. Yes, that work.
You got that long list down there, just to... I hear a second to, uh, a second to this long list by Commissioner Wilson on the deal. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Head. You did an outstanding job. Okay, this brings us to the financial. Ms. Stephanie Matlock. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Today's court, we have five-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-fifty-eight dollars and seven cents in invoices. My office has reviewed all invoices and recommends payment.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move that we pay the bills of five-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-fifty-eight dollars, seven cents.
Thousand fifty-eight dollars and seven cents, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? Okay. With that, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Let's run this to... You got anything else? Let me see if I-
We have the financial reports and bank reconciliations.
Yeah.
Would you like to combine those or separate them?
Okay. Oh, you got, you got all the financial reports? Okay.
Yeah, so my office has reviewed all the monthly reports and bank statements and recommends that the court accepts them.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a, uh, motion to approve the financial reports and banker reconciliations for April one through April twenty-five, or April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. That's presented.
Question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimous four zero. So that concludes the regular docket. So at this time, at ten ten, we are convening into executive session to discuss item seven, which is regarding the motion about sale, lease, or lease purchase of the fourteen seventy-five James Road property. Thank you for your attendance.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a shot at the motion here. Uh, this is to amend a motion that was made last time by Commissioner Samuelson, and the motion will, is this. This will be a motion to request the county attorney to offer extension of the current lease to the Y M, the Y at the current terms until sixty days after a new contract is signed. Second.
Point clarification, please. You said after a new extension is signed, or after sale? Or what is the extension contingent upon?
Contingent, the, so we have a, thank you for the question. So we have this, uh, RF, uh, an RFP out for sale, lease purchase, or lease. So whenever a contract, whenever the court gets an offer of any type, that's, that we all can agree on to accept, it'll be sixty days from that point in time to, for, if, for the Y, to extend their lease. If they get, if the co, if they get the contract, it won't make any difference to them.
Correct. So there are three options that are after, not just the sale.
Correct.
And any of the ones we offer and respond to the RFP can do one of the three, or they can do all three?
Has the RFP been released from the waiting on? It has been.
It has been released on, on those county websites.
I'll answer your questions. Any other questions or comments? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously four zero.